Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council for March 7th, 2013. Hi Suzanne. Roll call.
Councilmember Worms.
Here.
Councilmember Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Matador. Here. Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Spur, will you read it?
Sure. One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have acceptance of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to accept the agenda.
Actually, I think we have one item that we want to look at pulling. Can you bring it up?
Yes, if we could please pull item 6A of the Geiselman Street Waterline Replacement Project. So can I second his motion with that amendment?
Sure. Um, no. The attorney is...
You technically need to amend the motion.
I'll amend the motion to remove section...
6A.
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 Second. All right. Any questions from the public? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the consent agenda, we have the ordinances. Approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting of February 21st. Approve the warrant register of February 28th. And approve the application number 2017-010 with staff recommendations for the 2017 Camp and Shine event to be held on Park Street on June 17th.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second one.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any citizen input today? Steve Brooks.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor, just a couple things, I'll try to be brief. Steve Brooks, local businessman, 33 years in Lakeport. First thing is there was a closed session on February 7th, under the price and terms, exception to the Brown Act. And it puzzled me, and then I checked and found there was no report at a closed session. And my question is, that is a very narrowly tailored exception, basically for negotiating for price and terms. That property was purchased, I believe, March of 2015. So my question was, why was a closed session held when obviously price and terms had to be reached in order to purchase property? And if there was some other exception that was more appropriate, then fine, but otherwise there should be some explanation of what, what that's about. Number two, there's one unclaimed lamppost that are in downtown, everybody worked very hard to get posted. One was purchased by the family of Janelle Chapman, who died over a year ago. And I was talking to her mother, and she just mentioned in passing that the reason that they hadn't ordered a plaque or done something, it was no electricity hooked up. And as a component of that project, they were required to pay some amount to connect electricity to the previously purchased lamppost. I know several people that had purchased lampposts, I don't think any of them were charged any extra for a connection to be. Some of this is through the Main Street Association, but it struck me as, one, unfair to treat this unclaimed lamppost, it's unclaimed differently, and, two, it's holding up places with a plaque. Number three is, just my observation about the infamous Kmart RV that's been there for a long time. It shouldn't be there for that long time, in my opinion. I know there's been a recent flood emergency that I was tagged, I think back in December 16th, from what I can see on the tag. Lastly, I know the, this is the point I talked about, I'm thinking where I came last time. I know this is a sign, don't have a sign up there on this point. I also know that the courthouse committee is relooking at new sites to, because the existing site that they studied now is too expensive, and that was happening some months ago. But I just thought that the levers in charge or helping economic development ought to be aware that they're looking at other sites. I know that the council really wanted to keep that courthouse in Lakeport, and people opined at the time that was a great site, because they could carve part of it off, build a courthouse, there would be ancillary functions that would rent space. So I don't know if Mr. Rivera is in a receptive mood, but I think that relationship ought to be at least dialogue opened, because that would be nice if it stayed in Lakeport and not relocated to someplace outside of Lakeport. And lastly, just to comment, great work on city staff with flood emergency. I think the use of social media has been great. There's Nixle, a Facebook page, been all over. I've been through, this would be my third serious flood emergency in Lakeport, and I think that everybody's done a really good job to get through that, not out of the woods of water yet, but thank you for that. That's it.
Do we want to respond?
Although, I don't have anything about the electricity in the lamppost, so do you have...
I'm, I've never heard of that, so...
No, I know there's definitely electricity too. I think the issue is that we're still working with Main Street Association on getting the cost per lamp of the three new lampposts that are available for assigning memorial plaques to. So I think that's the whole of it, but there's no, there's electricity to all of them.
I think the comment was, through the Main Street Association, and actually the city council vote, was that someone said that you purchased a lamppost for $5,800, now you should pay an additional whatever amount to have the connection, and they're waiting for someone to tell them what that amount is, even though it seems like they shouldn't charge that amount.
I know where the confusion, I think, is in there, there are, there's two different things. There's three lampposts that are available in the downtown area, those are all served by electricity, but Lakeport Main Street also inquired about perhaps installing lamps in front of the Sulphur East Theater, and those ones are not served by electricity right now. So that, I think they're, I think the wires are getting crossed.
This lamppost, actually, was an unclaimed lamppost, pardon the original.
That's, yeah, that's...
If someone could maybe...
Well, Steve, we could pass that on, because the city council doesn't have anything to do with those, but we can pass that on. This appoint, we're aware of the courthouse projects that, and the state's looking for free property, so those are a match. And the Kmart RV, we, I don't think that we oversee that, but is that Kmart?
We're working with Kmart. The problem is, is that's in the common area, so they're deferring it to the property owner in New York. It's, it's a paperwork mess, but it's, it is on our radar, and is a, as in a priority to get that through.
Might just make a comment. I speculate it might be something like that, and sometimes, quite frankly, it just pays to spend the money and get it out of there, because the social media is kind of, not that you're going to bend the social media pressure, but it's really a eyesore behind our new PD. And that's what brought my attention to it, and I'm sure people are making comments. And sometimes, I mean, I've had private clients, we had to pay the money to have it towed and junked, and sometimes you sort it out later, but at least you get it gone. Thanks.
David, did you want to add anything?
Nope, I didn't have...
Okay. Suzanne Lyons.
Hi. Hi. Am I on? Yeah. Oh, okay. Suzanne Lyons. I attended a meeting of the invasive species council on Monday, and I don't, there was nobody else that's in the city, but I don't think anybody probably got the word, because it looks like their contact information was for Mark Branigan, so I sent Greg Tuesday a message. Yeah, I didn't think so. So I just wanted to give you some, a few of the highlights from that meeting. Mark Miller was the presenter. Montana apparently has now a lake with villagers that they have closed to all boating, and if you don't know anything about quadra mussels, talk to me later, because I've got eight years' worth of information, and you don't want to hear it all now. But there are four new infected lakes in California, in Southern California. There's Silverwood, Castaic, Lake Paris, and Pyramid Lake, and in Pyramid Lake they found adult mussels, which, that is really bad, that's what you do not want to hear. So they are on the move. They're concerned in California about the aqueduct system. I'm just going to hit highlights here. In March and November, they checked the substrates in our lake. So far, so good. We're not, we're not showing any, any problems now. There were 21 decontaminations done in 2016. That's where they get out the machine that the city saved. Let's see. Last year, we had boats from 37 states come to our lake, so they're definitely, they definitely travel around. The big thing that the city needs to do is, the city needs an ordinance that matches the county ordinance. And what happened, there was an incident two years ago where there was a boat that was launched at our Fifth Street ramp, they didn't have a sticker, they, we tried to stop them, we tried to talk to them, and the police tried to ticket them and couldn't do it, because the county's ordinance says it only covers unincorporated lands within the county. So it doesn't cover the city of Clear Lake, and it doesn't cover the city of Lakeport. So there was a problem with us being able to issue a citation. So what we need to do, it seems to me, I'm not an attorney, that it would be easier for the county to just take out that unincorporated and cover, I don't know if that can work, and just everybody would be covered, or else we need to write an ordinance that matches theirs, so that we can be, we can guard our own ramps, they can guard our own ramps too. But that was, that was a big problem, so that was one of the things that has been hanging around for several years. One of the things that had happened that was really good is, apparently Caltrans has granted us use of their easements for signage. That's something that's taken us eight years to get, but that means that those signs that you can't see because they're way off the freeway are going to be able to be moved closer. We've been talking about for years now, maybe having low-frequency radio information to people, so that when they come into the county, they can see the sign, they can turn on their radio, and they can get information. So that's one of the things that we're talking about. There's a new decon unit that the county has bought, it's over on Campbell Lane, so that's something good to know as well. And they're talking about a feasibility study for what we can do to be able to close the ramps, not to close them for everybody all the time, but to be able to control them somehow, like they do up in Tahoe, they have arms that come down, and you can present a card or something. What, part of the really exciting news, though, is that Carolyn Rutan says that she has several planning grants in the works, and she's hoping to get something like possibly $400,000, and she said, we need to know how we want to spend that. So I think that that would be something that we should be thinking on, is how we can help spend the money, and certainly part that would be in some sort, because we have the big ramps, in some sort of system of being able to control who can watch, fund others. There are 15, someone had it, 15 ramp monitors now. All they do is give out information. They aren't police, they don't issue citations, but they do tell people about the program, and tell them where to go and get stickers if they need to. The price of the sticker has been doubled now, it used to be $10, it's now $20, and apparently it is, people are not complaining, so that's good to hear, too. See, what else? Oh, Mark Miller is the contact person for the county, and if we have any ideas, we definitely should get our ideas to the county so that they know what we would be interested in. I don't know if somebody from the city council wants to go to the meetings, I'd be happy to go to the meetings if that's what you want, but I think that somebody should be there, and they're not regular meetings, I don't know how often they're going to have them, they haven't had it for quite some time now. But the season is on again, we get a lot of votes, and we don't want the mussels.
We have an assigned council member?
I don't know, I'm just wondering.
I don't think we have a question.
We'll have to report the list and double check, but we love to get the report from you, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you Suzanne.
Thank you Suzanne.
Great, Mayor.
Yeah.
Regarding the county ordinance on the issuance of citations, that's not my understanding. My understanding is that we do have the authority to write tickets, and in fact, the county several years ago provided us with their tickets that we could issue for those kind of violations.
Okay, well, I know that one of the things that we were supposed to do, and I don't know if Steve's still here, but I know Steve was supposed, Steve Brooks was supposed to be working with Anita to put together an ord, matching ordinances. So that's something I don't know about, but that's probably something that the city should look into, to see what...
I don't recall on that, but I know that, that we'd been given training by the county in giving enforcement manuals, and they also provided us with, with their administrative citations that we could use, as well as we could forward to the DA if necessary. But that's my understanding, going back three years, that we had the ability to do that.
Okay, and they may have changed, they did change the ordinance, because there are several copies of it, and I'm not sure, but...
I'm not aware, I just wanted you to know, that was my understanding, and that we did have the authority to write citations.
Okay, because I know that with the incident that we had, it was in 2014, that apparently was the problem, was that the officer couldn't write it, could not write the...
We have, in fact, written tickets for that.
Okay, all right.
So I'd have to, I mean, maybe I should call Carolyn and ask...
It should be something that we get straightened out, because, yeah, it would be a good idea.
And Councilmember Turner pulled the list, it's Councilmember Parlet.
I would be happy to be there.
I thought so, yeah. Okay.
If they have my contact information.
We'll make sure they do.
I have Suzanne and Colleen.
Suzanne forwarded to the head of the...
More carpool.
Citizen input. Next we have Nicole Wagner.
Hi, I'm Nicole Wagner. I live here in Young. First of all, I want to say thank you to the city folks who cleaned up everything and the emergency counseling. Everything worked wonderfully. This is my first emergency here in Lakeport. I mean, I can't believe how wonderful it, everything worked out to be. So kudos to them, if somebody could pass that along, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
The main reason I came here, though, is we now have rubber repairs that we need to do, correct? How much money have we collected from the 1% sales tax for that, A? And if it's not enough, are we going to get a grant that needs matching funds for our emergency repairs? And if we do need matching funds, where will they come from? Do we really have the money to spend $20,000 on a feasibility study for a hotel? That may never happen. And if we do do the feasibility study, they should really come in August, when it's green season here, green lake season, I mean. Otherwise, we won't get an accurate feasibility study, and that's all I can say. Thank you.
So the feasibility study is a grant?
And it can only be spent for that?
Right.
Oh.
So that's different money. And then we have declared an emergency, and...
And we're going to continue it.
We are going to continue it, and we are hoping that the governor does the same. And we've done our damage assessments from the storm on the roads and the retaining walls and the parks and...
All the stuff.
Right. And, and it's been a lot of time and hours, and it adds up, so hopefully we will get some money back from the state.
Do we normally have to give matching funds to those kinds of funds?
Not for disaster, do you think?
Yeah, if it's, if it's declared a state disaster, then we, the state usually, it's about 75%. If it becomes a federal disaster, then it's usually 90 or more percent that we get back. But a lot of our match is our, we, they have a lot of staff time in here, so there's a lot of in-kind that we could use as our 25% match that we've, that we've been spending if we get that designation. And then on the, on the measures Z question, we haven't collected a penny yet on that, it starts in April, and so the first payment wouldn't be until the fall, I'll know.
Okay, thank you.
I think there was one thing that I noticed in the minutes, was that if we, or according to our staff report, that we spend so much money on the feasibility study, and half of it is left over, we could actually use it for actively marketing, but we can't do it. I think it was in the staff report that if it was $20,000 and it costs 10, we could use $10,000 to actively market and do other types of things like that.
Yeah, I believe that the marketing portion could be part, we could use that with the feasibility study, because we had actually got a $40,000 grant.
So we could use up to half of it, or whatever, the unused portion for marketing?
We're checking with the state to make sure that that's, that's accurate.
But it doesn't cost us anything for the feasibility?
Well, we put 5, we had to match 5,000 if we spent the 40, yeah.
Right.
All right. Questions?
I thought that was like, marketing to hotels that would want to move, not just marketing in general.
Marketing for hotels, yeah. Marketing the...
Hotels, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, next we have a presentation from Philip Moy of Lake County Water Resources Department with an update on the lake level and the county's urgency boating ordinance.
Let's see, what would you say is the best place to stand?
Up here.
I can stand here, and then I can't see my slides.
Well, we'll have you turn, because that's where the microphone is.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have to put my back. Not a problem.
That's okay. You want to pull that mic up a little, too? There you go.
So... Sounds good.
He's getting fired up.
Yeah. Well, I gave a short presentation at a, kind of a public comment session that I had a week ago Sunday, on just about, a little bit of background on how the Golo, Golo County, the Cache Creek Dam works, and then we had some discussions, some public input time on the urgency ordinance on boating that we got. Kevin said you were interested in hearing more about that, or hearing about that personally, so I'm very thankful to have that opportunity to speak with you today. That's kind of, just wanted to... So what I, what I intend to give you is just a little bit of background on the, on the operation of the Cache Creek Dam, and, yes? No? No?
It might not be...
Uh, not as good.
There you go.
Okay. Basically, who operates the Cache Creek Dam, and some of the operations that we've seen going on in February, and then how that affects, I guess, a little bit of high water, and that affects boating, and that affects our time. So the Cache Creek Dam is not operated by Lake County, inasmuch as it resides in Lake County. It's operated by the Yolo County Flood Control and Water Conservation Institute. So they, as you know probably, are entitled to a certain amount of volume of water off the top of Clear Lake for their irrigation needs. But they have been in close contact with my department, Water Resources at the county, in terms of operation of the gates to let out basically as much water as they possibly can since the middle of January, when the lake really started coming up. Since then, we've seen the discharge have ranged from about 3,500 CFS cubic feet per second up to almost 7,000 cubic feet per second. They've had some very brief closures for debris removal, as you can imagine, the volume of water approaching the dam is quite high, and you've seen the debris around the lake, that same material is going down towards the dam. So they do close the gates periodically for a brief amount of time, an hour, or maybe two or three, while the crews get out and remove the debris. Tim O'Halloran, who operates the dam, is a general manager, and the sheriffs, now they're getting two or more crews out there at a time to be sure the removal of the debris as quickly as possible. So even with all this water that's being let out, why does the water keep rising, or it's forcing it now and going down? How does it revert to zero? There we go. So basically, the dam is unable to discharge as much water as it is designed to. It's designed to handle 21,000 cubic feet per second, but because of this, this geological formation in Cache Creek near the Lake Road Bridge, it's called the Grigsby Ripple, that constrains how much water can actually be discharged from Clear Lake out the lake. So just in my observations, looking at the NOAA data, rainfall, and the predictions of how much water they were, the lake level would rise or fall, for each inch of rainfall in February, the lake came up about 2 to 3 tenths of a foot, so a tenth of a foot is just less than 1 and 1/4 inches, 1.2 inches. So about 2.4 or 3.6 inches, the lake would come up per inch of rainfall. So our February precipitation was about 13 inches, and the lake stage came up not quite 3 feet, 2.8 feet. So over the same period, the dam was able to discharge about 1/10 of an inch of foot level per day, when there's no rain. Now, recently, when there's rain, the lake continues to come up, and that overflow is constrained. So we actually mentioned the Grigsby Ripple. So, oh, there it is. Okay, or at you, Clear Lake, Lower Lake, here's Cache Creek coming out here, here's the Grigsby Ripple near Lake Drive, and the dam is this little white fluffy area over here. So the Grigsby Ripple has, I was talking to someone a couple weeks ago, and I'd really like to assimilate, it's sort of like a clog in your artery. So it's clogging, clogging the, so if you could have an open artery with a wide-open flow, and the Grigsby Ripple comes along, it's just like a bat with the lipids that deposit in your heart, and it's this rock sill that constrains how much water can get past that. And so that's really what controls the amount of water that's able to get out of the dam. It's not, not that Golo County is closing the dam to try and store more water up in Lakeport, certainly not now, they have no intention of flooding people. It's this Grigsby Ripple that forms really the constraint on how much water can get out. Back in 1937, 1938, the Corps of Engineers started to mine that out, because they did exactly what we're trying, what we would like to happen now. We wanted more water to get out of the lake, so the residents up here wouldn't flood. They reduced the elevation of that rock sill by about 2 and 1/2 feet, and that started flooding some, threatening to flood some farmland downstream of the dam owned by the Bremer Lees. And the Bremer Lees didn't like that their land is being flooded, and their structures were threatened for being flooded. They never actually got to their house, or their barn, or their tranches, but they didn't like it. They took the court, took them to court, and there was a court decree that says you can no longer excavate the Grigsby Ripple to enhance flow out of the Cache Creek Dam. Since then, simply through sediment deposition, the Grigsby Ripple is filled back in by about a foot to minus about 1 and 1/2 feet runs. So while it's a little bit better than it might have been back in the 1890s, early 1900s, it's still constrained. So when you look at the daily discharge, you can find the links to this on the Water Resources website, or you can go to the NOAA and look up the gauges, but it varies between 3,500, 4,700 CFS in February. I think right now we're around 3,200, 3,300 CFS. But sometimes, the day, the discharge is much higher. I know one time, I think in February, for a couple days, it was running around 6,950 CFS. So how can we have really high flow sometimes, and much lower flow the rest of the time, and the lake just doesn't go down? And I know it frustrates a lot of people who watch that gauge discharge. Well, why? I know they call Tim, and they go, why? Why does the dam start letting out a lot of water in anticipation of the rain, but then right after the rain, they close the gates? That's not what's happening. Basically, what's happening is there's some, a couple of creeks between the Grigsby Ripple way over here and the dam, so there's Herne Creek, and Cops Creek, and some other tributaries that run off the east side of the creek, that discharge into this, this little stretch of Cache Creek. That raises the level of Cache Creek and allows the dam to discharge what looks like a lot more water. Well, it is, but it's not coming from the lake. It's coming from these tributaries along here. The lake is still constrained by its alcoibi Grigsby Ripple. So you see that 6,900, 6,800 CFS going out? That's basically the storm runoff from these creeks entering Cache Creek, and then that goes out. That's basically the storm runoff from these creeks entering Cache Creek and then that goes out. So we know that high lake levels are going to persist. That is flood, we're probably going to reach flood stage 9.0 tomorrow, maybe tomorrow evening. And then maybe hit monitor, that's 8.0 about the third week of March. And if my estimations are correct, we'll see lake full, 7.56 around the end of the month. So the lake is slowly going down. If you look at the gauges, between a tenth of a foot, one and a half tenths of a foot per day, 1.2, 1.8 inches, slowly falling today, it kind of leveled off as a response to the rain that we had a couple of days. So what impacts have we seen from this? Well, at 10-foot runs, which is just about nine tenths of foot more than what we had today, we had 4,200 properties affected around the lake, not just Lakeport, but all the way around the lake. And their value is greater than $900 million in taxes as well. So there's some really significant impacts there. Of course, that's not all structures, that's some properties, it's that water lapping up on the shore rather than lapping up in the living room. Now, when the water drops, as we've learned, not all the impacts go away. If you have a house that was flooded or the sewer was impacted and the sewer backed up in your, your living room or your bathroom, those impacts remain. So just dropping the water level will not entirely address the issues. So then we got to, back in February, in response to that high water and some, even though we tried to establish a no-wake zone a half mile from shore, so really extending it a long ways, some residents were not, either not cognizant of that no-wake area or ignored it. And they created a wake wave that disturbed or overtopped some sandbags. And the response to that, okay, if you can't obey the law, we're just going to close the lake to motorized boat access. Motorized boats leave us much stronger weight than, say, sailboats or canoes or other paddle craft. But that affected our fishing access and our tournament access. So bass fishing in California is worth a lot of money. Even in Lake County, it's at least a million dollars a year just for bass tournaments. In February, we lost three tournaments during the lake closure. March, we have our first big tournament coming up next Saturday with between 150 and 180 boats. Bass anglers, as well as regular anglers, spend a lot of money when they go fishing. It's a big economic input to our county. They spend it on guides, lodging, meals, fuel for boat and, and their vehicles. They spend it on bait and tackle, sometimes they bring their families with them. And there's other shopping also, as you know, it's a pretty big economic stimulus for everyone. So shutting the boat, shutting the lake down tournaments, let alone other recreational boating is a pretty significant step. So I looked at boat wakes, because that's really the concern, what happens with boat wakes. Wakes can have far-reaching impacts, not just in terms of the wave that we see on the surface of the water, but the energy of that wave with the displaced water underneath the surface. So a one-foot-high wave diminishes to about three feet, quarter mile from the boat. That's, imagine that, 1,200 feet, 1,260 feet away. It finally diminishes from this to three inches. The erosive force, the energy in that water only begins to dissipate about 1,300 feet from the boat. So we really need to, particularly in this high-water period, this is why we want to slow the boats down near shore. We started with a no-wake zone. Sheriff Martin said he couldn't enforce a no-wake zone, so he had to go to five miles an hour or an hour idle speed. He chose idle speed because even some boats can leave a wake at five miles per hour just from a different hull design. Idle speed is just, what, about four or 500 RPMs, whatever the motor is idling at is pushing the boat along very, very slowly through that. So we extended this, established the extended no-wake zone, that's a quarter mile from shore, to try and address those wake issues and the idle speed issue. So that, this will remain in effect while the lake is at or above 8.0 runs. So we're just approaching nine now, so probably third, third week of January, or of March or so, we'll probably hit monitor at that 8.0. At that point, it would revert back to a 400 feet from shore idle speed or five mile per hour. The enforcement of this is difficult. The county only has one marine unit out there for most, some of the summer until about May. They bring on more help, they're able to get more units out there. I heard for a fact that down this weekend, where there was a pre-fishing involved, where the tournament anglers come in a week or so early, they fish in advance of the event. The anglers are policing each other. They saw someone going a little too fast near shore. Two other boats closed in right in on them and really gave a tongue-lashing from what they were doing. So they know the consequences of their bad behavior can be died. But we also need to be sure that our, our lakeshore residents and Lake County residents are aware that we have that idle speed near zone as well. So the urgency that ordinance that was enacted last week ago, week ago today, basically, it was intended to prevent property damage by establishing that extended idle speed zone, ensure boater safety. When we first started thinking about this, there was a lot of debris out there. The sheriff has done a great job putting the heavy debris off the lake and restore the economic benefits that we receive from the lake. Not just the, not just the aesthetic appeal, but actually getting the tournaments here and engaging their pocket boats in our economy. So this has all been in response to emergency ordinance, and we passed three of them, I think. So we're working to establish what will be then a permanent ordinance so that voters know all the time what's going to happen when the lake hits 8.0 or eight and a half or nine, whatever, whatever level runs that the board decides. But we'd like to then be able to tie the boating activity, that is, in this case, that idle speed zone, for example, extending out some more distance from shore, tie that to lake level so that everybody knows automatically when the lake hits eight feet, say, now I need to be farther offshore before it can go fast. I would personally like to see that we avoid closure of the lake to boating altogether again. I think we can do that through enough, not only policing or enforcement, but that self-policing. People know that that consequence can be really adverse to their boating activity, not just visitors, but residents as well. I think we can avoid that. It's will, I think it will help prevent property damage by abating those nearshore wakes, ensures the boater's safety, they should be going slow enough. And they have to be cognizant of what's out there if there is heavy debris. And we want to maintain the economic benefits of the lake for the county. Perhaps you have a question, your just question, if there's time?
Of course, any questions?
The county was involved in some long, drawn-out lawsuits involving the Bremer League decree, I think at one time, because they went in there and they started bringing it back down to what it was before. And it sounds to me like that is a possibility again, because you said due to siltation and infill that we are over what the original free-flowing level would have been because of the silt, so that we would be within our rights in the Bremer League decree to go in there and remove some of that for future flooding. But we just came off seven years of drought, it wasn't anything, it was a high priority. But I can see now that it might be something that we would be in our rights to do that, if I remember correctly, through the county. I think Cameron Reeves was the county attorney on that. And they worked very hard to keep out of jail, so to speak, because it was very serious, because there was a lot of damage done down there. But all they did is take it down to what it used to be. And I think now where we would have been, we, the county, would be within our rights to do that. Would that be true?
I'm not going to speak today because I can't say for sure. But I think what I'm confident with is the amount of structures and property and the value of the property that now exists on the lake. Certainly, we can all imagine versus 1940, the value of the properties versus now in the development alone, has got to be a pretty heavy persuasive point for not only going back down to 2.5, minus 2.5 runs, but maybe even deeper than that, to really alleviate the flooding so that we're not looking at 35 or 40 days of flooding of structures along the shoreline. So I have talked to Amy Grant about that and obviously she's very busy and she says, go get them filled. I'll be looking into that more if I can.
Thank you.
Yeah, along those lines, looking at those figures, it would seem like we can at least take it down another foot because we've come up a foot and a half from what it was from when those laws were passed. So us going back to where it was when those laws were passed would seem logical.
It would seem logical. And I guess that was the Corps of Engineers who did that. And I don't know if we would have to get the Corps of Engineers back to do that again. That's part of what I wanted to look at in person.
Then the other question I would have is, when you're putting out this thing about people in their boats and what the ordinances are at, you know, 8.0, are we going to put signage up at the dock saying this is the level of the lake now? So this is what's in the ordinance? Because if somebody's just coming up here to go boating for the weekend, they don't actually going to look at what the level of the lake is on the runs engaged.
Yeah.
So are we going to say, this is the level of the lake, you got to follow these rules?
Well, part of that is, could be taken care of in conjunction with the foggy muscle sticker. They have to get a sticker, they could be told, remember the lake's at 8.5, we got to go slow. One might even imagine the, sort of like the fire danger signs, you know, with the lakes at this, this month. I don't know, there's different ways that we might be able to take care of it.
I think if we got a cell phone app, that would be great.
Cell phone app would be good?
Because everybody has one of those, even the seven and eight-year-olds.
Any other questions?
That was great, Phil, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Suzanne, why don't you come up and ask your question?
Yeah, I just had actually a question for Phil. One of the questions I had is, we're seeing a lot of buoys that are washing out. So I'm assuming that some of those channels that tell voters where they are probably aren't, they're probably not marked right now because we're seeing them all over Lakeshore Boulevard. So that might be something to think about, is how do they know where they are? How close into shore they are if the buoys are on?
Right, well, Mark and Scott, you know Mark Miller, one of my staff members.
Yeah.
Scott Webb will be heading out on the lake this week to start buoy maintenance.
Oh, okay, they might look on Lakeshore Boulevard, there's more of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a great presentation. I thought it was great when he did it for the public on Sunday. It was needed and well-attended. Very nice. Moving on to council business, community development director, hotel feasibility analysis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. The city was awarded approximately $40,000 by USDA to develop a hotel feasibility analysis later, when was that, the end of last year? We sent out a request for proposals, which was circulated in November of last year. And from that request, we received three proposals. A consultant selection committee made up of city staff, members of LEAC and representatives from the Chamber of Commerce reviewed those applications at the beginning of February. And based on that review, city staff and the consultant selection committee recommended that the city council enter into a contract with HVS. Staff is excited to work with HVS. They're, they're very well-known experts in the hotel industry field. They have a long track record of completing these feasibility studies. But in addition to completing those studies, they also have a very good track record of actually physically attracting hotels to the areas where they have completed those studies. So that was a big feature of our, of our selection. So, and just also in that, based on the amount that they're requesting, I think their, their total contract with travel and everything comes out to approximately $20,000. USDA grant, in addition to completing the feasibility study, would allow the marketing of the site as well. So there should be some extra monies left over once the study is completed to actually move into that next stage of actually going out there and trying to attract a hotel to the Lakeport community. So staff recommends that the council approve the PSA between HVS and the city. Can of course take any questions.
Thanks, Kevin, any questions?
Yeah, I was kind of curious, since I just started a while back. Are they going to look at only specific pieces of property or is this for the whole town? Or is this, I mean, what are they going to be looking at for the physical feasibility study?
We did some in regards to our lakefront plan, but this actual feasibility study is for the entire community. And we've done some, some background work that we will turn over to them on some site selections that include the lakefront, but also some other areas of town as well. Mostly, those are the two primary areas, along the shoreline and then near Highway 29. But if they have some other sites that they think are feasible, we're all ears as well.
So they're going to look at the whole town and look at properties that may support a hotel and infrastructure for the hotel? And then say, yes, for this property, this property, and this property, and then, okay.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I would imagine they'd probably give us kind of a sort of prioritized fashion which areas they think are most appropriate.
Which they would think a hotel will bind on, maybe bind on.
Correct.
Any other question?
So Kevin, when they do this study, does it include a size and scope and those types of things? I mean, you know, like it's going to be like a 27-story high-rise. We're recommending in communities this side, because they have the experience, you know, there's something like eight, you know, eight stories or six, that comes along.
There is zoning in place.
We're not, we're not allowing anything, you know, less than eight stories. No, no, they, they, they're, part of their technical assistance will be identifying, you know, what the number of room numbers are, but not only just the physical count of numbers, but, you know, what kind of, what kind of lodging amenities are going to be the most attractive to a hotel and give them the biggest bang for their buck.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify on here, the $40,000 that we have budgeted for this is all from a grant, correct? Or was there matching points with that?
Yes, there was a, the council approved at the time of the application, $5,000 matching, but, yeah.
Yeah, which we thought at the time was, was well worth the money.
Yeah.
Considering we're getting eight times the money back in marketing and the work that they're doing.
So they would be looking at, you know, they're saying eight stories, and that kind of worries me, do they? Do we have fire trucks that would go with it? I'm sure it'd be like a two or three-story place.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that they'll go that in-depth, but we do have zoning in place that has the height restrictions and things like that. But, you know, our marketing analysis that was completed as part of the lakefront plan kind of shows a ballpark area of, you know, 60 to 80 units and stuff. We think that it's a little higher with that if you factor in some demand from the growing wine industry and things like that. So I don't, I don't think we have an eight-story hotel in our region.
I was just being, trying to lighten it a little.
If it's got a small footprint, it could go up.
Well, you're freaking out Councilmember Spur.
We do have zoning.
That just means that the hotel would have to buy us a bigger fire truck.
Anyone from the public, any comments or questions? Okay.
I do have one question.
Suzanne, we haven't seen you in a while.
I just had a question. I know that the previous general plan had some heights, what do I want to say?
Restrictions.
Restrictions on lakefront property. I don't know what the general plan says now, does anybody know about that as far as?
Well, it's within the zoning too, isn't it?
Yeah, the zoning and the general plan are compatible in their heights along the shoreline. And there are use permit process that allow, you know, extensions above, above those.
That's what I'm afraid of, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Eight stories is scary.
We'll see what that means too.
Thank you, definitely you will. Thank you definitely. No, because my question is when you start talking about a lakefront hotel, I know that that's been one of the things that has been a problem as far as people who live here saying, you know, do we really want to take our view shed, which is some of the only view shed that we have around the lake now, and put something tall in front of it for people, other people to come and use. So.
Do you know how many stories it is off the lake?
I, I believe it, there's, there's, I don't know off the top of my head, but I mean, there's no way that it's more than three.
That's what I was saying, it's two or three.
Yeah, we have the one, three-story building down here.
On First Street.
First Street, yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that was one of my questions. And also I know that a number of years ago, there was, there was some work done by Richard Knoll, looking at a boutique hotel here, which that to me is kind of an interesting idea too. And it doesn't, there isn't a great definition of that, but I think it's something like five to 30 rooms is what you look at.
Yeah. Their, their first job is going to see whether it is even feasible to add another hotel to, to Lakeport.
To what we have, yeah.
That's, that's the very first job is like, okay. And then if, if there is, how big, how many rooms can this community, how many rooms can be provided that will keep the hotel full enough throughout the year? Do that make it feasible for a hotel? And then what type? Is it a boutique hotel or is it? So then we're going to get, hopefully it'll, first of all, it'll pass the first test of, of yes, we could, we can support another hotel here. And then it would be, they would give us what they think that we could be able to, that would work here. That would be, wouldn't be too big. We want to make sure that, you know, they have, they have to meet the certain percentage. I think it's a 51% or whatever it is occupancy throughout the year. And there's different criteria that they have to meet. So the actual size and the height would be way down the road on that, but it would be really interesting to see how many rooms they think that Lakeport could.
Support.
Could support, yeah.
So if their first answer is no, it won't support anything, do we get to keep the rest of the money?
Well, they're marketing anything. They don't think it could support it. So.
Thanks Suzanne.
I think one of the things that was really revealing to me, and I can't validate all this information, but it seems logical. But back in the day when Canuck Day was going great guns and they had concerts throughout the year that I heard the number thrown around, maybe Kevin can comment on this, but there was like 95 days a year, which is almost one out of every three days, that every hotel, bed and breakfast, more or less was full. And this is, you know, as we so often mention, is the new normal. And so this would be a completely new time and place to do that kind of study. Because back then, and that was part of the problem. People didn't have to do anything. They didn't have to do any maintenance. If people were going to show up, they need, "I need a room. I don't care." You know, and they go in there and then they got all this gravy train. And then when they went away, they hadn't done what their due diligence and a lot of the places had been taking care of business. And then they went out of business. And so this is the new normal. And it'd be interesting to see how this rolls out.
Yeah. And one of the things we asked for is can, would it be feasible to accommodate some type of conference space?
Conference center, yeah.
So we'd have some larger meeting space here in town. So how big could, you know, could we sustain?
Yeah. And the interesting thing is going north of Santa Rosa, there is really a very limited, you know, the River Lodge, used to be Eureka Inn, and then there's very limited amount of resources for large, for example, that's why a lot of the big events would go on in Canuck Day because it's one of the only places around where they could have a big conference with three to 400 people. And there's no facilities going north. So I'm sure that'll be on the table for that too, because people could come here as a destination resort and have a conference center too.
I don't like to think of dire circumstances in the future, but given the increasing dramatic weather events, it's also nice to have additional inventory for, for short-term stays for residents who may be displaced from time to time.
Based on the last two years.
That's a good point.
Yeah, plus we seem to be getting more and more events with the boat races and stuff like that. So those could bring more and more people, which will help with the situation.
And travelers are looking for a certain level of hotel that maybe they're not finding right now. So something new could be huge benefit. So if there's no other questions or comments, we have a suggested motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the professional service agreement between the City of Lakeport and HVS Division of TS Worldwide LLC for the development and implementation of the hotel marketing development feasibility analysis and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the City of Lakeport.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks Kevin. Next, we have a local emergency proclamation. Margaret?
Actually, yes, go ahead. This is David's item.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As you recall, you ratified an emergency declaration at the last council meeting. And under the California Emergency Services Act and our own municipal code, you are required to review that proclamation every 14 days in order to determine when it's, it's feasible to terminate it. At this point, given the level of the lake, as we recently learned from Mr. Moore, staff is requesting that you move to continue the emergency declaration. And we have a suggested motion for that. So, any questions?
Would this be a good time to get a little update of where we're at with everything?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Sure. I would defer to other staff for that.
Okay. Who wants to start first? Actually, my staff has been very busy working around the clock here. So Doug probably has a little update for you and Brad too.
Great.
Yeah, I can bring you kind of speak of what Public Works is doing right now. Today we started opening up some of the closures that we had. Lake Shore Boulevard in particular was a high priority for us to try to get that open as soon as possible as that carries basically all our northbound and southbound traffic coming in and out of the north into Lakeport. And so today we were successful in getting that road opened up. We use the water walls as a barrier between the areas that we have confirmed are undermined. And we've proof rolled the rest of the roadway so that we have a level of confidence that we're not going to have any vehicles, you know, crashing through asphalt. We do have the deflection testing has to be done during good weather. It can't be done during the rain. That is scheduled for Thursday. We're supposed to have some good weather. So we'll be, Lake Shore will be closed for portions when we're doing work in that area. Deflection testing will be one. We have Pacific Saw Cutters coming in tomorrow to cut the asphalt so that when we go to start removing the area that we know is compromised, it doesn't compromise asphalt that's next to it. In other words, when we start lifting it up, we don't want to lift up our good road. And so we're tentatively scheduled to begin removing the failed portion and put in a temporary repair beginning next week. That should be completed by the end of next week. Then through the process, we're working with Caltrans and federal highways. And hopefully then we'll get funding for a permit repair, which would be to come back in and do a more substantial repair than what we're going to make. We're just making a repair to eliminate any further wave intrusion into our roadbed. And I won't bore you with all the details on how we're going to go about doing that. Moving on, we're going to be meeting with FEMA and Cal OES tomorrow and going over some of our damages. That's probably a couple hours. And Espinots are still underwater, so we're not doing anything in that area. We did open up Library Park parking lot from Third to Fifth Street. And the Third Street ramp has remained closed due to our dock situation that we have that we don't feel comfortable in opening that up. Fifth Street ramp is open at this time. So we just did that. It closed the business today. So Brad doesn't even know that yet. So we're moving right ahead. We've hauled out nine dump truck loads of toolies from just the parking lots here at Library Park. And staff's working very hard at trying to return the city back to normalcy. And as soon as areas open up that we can get into and start cleanup, we're doing that.
So Doug, did you find a buyer for those toolies? Because somebody's going to be upset about that.
We do have them in our compost pile. And so we will be recycling them into usable compost for our park facilities.
Perfect.
So as I understand now, Doug, so we would be down to all of our road closures, the only ones remaining being in the Espinot area at this time?
Correct.
Did you have to go through the one-way metering?
No, actually we're, we have two lanes, but we do have a narrow lane that's just not a standard lane width. The northbound lane going out being that's closest to the damage. But there is room for everything except a wide load. It has to be a standardized vehicle. Wide loads have, are supposed to get a permit from us and then we would just tell them they're not allowed to go through there.
So school buses, okay to travel under there? Or are you keeping those up?
No, school buses can, can go through there. We're not really, to be perfectly honest with you, we're not doing a huge advertisement, you know, that Lake Shore's open for full freeway traffic yet. Because we are still monitoring it and making sure, you know, everything's got to stay kosher and try to get back to some normalcy. We've been working with, with a garbage company to try to get normal garbage pickup resumed. Their normal pickup day is tomorrow. We're going to be monitoring them and seeing how that goes and trying to restore some kind of normalcy to the people that are stuck along that section.
Yeah, I'll pick up there. And one thing I want to emphasize about the, the section of roadway we have on Lake Shore, which is essentially from Lang to about 100 feet north of Jones Street where they have barricaded off that section of undermined road. We're going to be monitoring that closely with police patrols because of the fact that these are narrow nine-foot lanes. So we want to make sure that people are driving through there safely. And then an additional point to that is, you know, under the California Vehicle Code laws, although the speed limit sign may say 30, people still have to drive for condition, what's safe for conditions. So if we're seeing, seeing driving behavior that, that where, you know, they're unsafe even if they're under a speed limit, we can still take enforcement actions. So, you know, I want to emphasize that we're, we do, we want to keep, monitor that situation down there to make sure that the drivers stay safe. So we'll put out additional notices if we need to, but we did get one out on that today. And then as you may have seen late this afternoon, we issued press releases that we lifted evacuation orders at Luckyport and Aqua Village. And so the only two that aren't lifted are the Espinot area, which still has significant water as we, as we're aware of. That area tends to flood, you know, prior to nine feet, somewhere around eight five, eight five, I think. So we've got a ways to go there. And then, you know, we still have additional challenges with the Willapoin Resort due to the, some of the infrastructure issues that the state has to inspect on utilities down there. But primary focus that, you know, my department will be working on tomorrow is trying to get, you know, some controlled access. We need to get some people in there to be able to get some, some things out of their places. So that's a priority for us. And I'm hoping to, to have a plan hopefully in place sometime tomorrow to be able to do that. And so that's a big step for, for what I kind of been working on right now.
Kevin?
Margaret Kelly and I have been working very closely on, you know, working with the evacuees that are out at the Sunday Adventist Church Red Cross Shelter, coming up with some long-term housing plans. Margaret can probably talk a little bit more detail on some of the assistance we're trying to do, but mostly been able to putting together pieces in place to try and help with deposits and things like that and relocating folks in those areas. Because as Brad just mentioned, even though floodwaters have receded out of that Willapoin area, it's still likely going to be a couple weeks before we can even get in and actually identify what, what problems still remain primarily with the sewer system due to intrusion levels coming in from the lake. So we're a couple weeks out from that. We did meet with the property owner out there. He indicated that he would like to make those repairs as quickly as possible, but he said that's still going to be a couple weeks out before we can even get in there to identify those problems. So we're working on some long-term housing strategies for those folks that look like they're going to be out of their homes for, for still some time to come.
Yeah. I'll add to that. Yeah. Actually, Senator McGuire has been really helpful in working with the city. He was able to get a commitment of $50,000 for some assistance, for some rental assistance for the 41 families that are displaced there. We're working also, and we also have some housing funds from the city that we can help assist the, those funds that we got from the state. And they're still looking for more funding that might be available. We're working with California Human Development. They will be the ones that will be dispersing the state funding. And they will also be taking, doing our intake for us to get all the right information that we need and for assistance. So that'll, that'll really help with our, our staff. Our, also the EOC has, we've, we've minimized our hours there. We went from 24/7 for the first few days to now it's, it's just nine to five Monday through Friday that, that we'll be answering the phone for EOC. And actually, there's a message phone there that we check periodically throughout the day. And there's a message on there too, if it is an emergency, you know, dial 911. But otherwise, we'll be getting back to someone. And we also have a Spanish message and we'll be, we have staff that will be addressing any, any of the issues out there that need to be translated. And staff has been working closely with the evacuees at the Seventh-day Adventist Church, which I am so thankful to the Red Cross and Seventh-day Adventist Church and what they've been doing. It's been amazing. They, the population there has been staying around 87 people in that church. That's a huge amount of people for that, that building. And they're so gracious. And Red Cross has, about a week ago, took over the operation there. They're still partnering, but they, they brought in a lot more staff. And so at one point, they also had Armory open, but there was, I think it was the most, like seven people there. So they, they closed the Armory and will be doing, will be using just the Red Cross, the church shelter right now. They are planning on opening either the Armory or hopefully an empty storefront downtown. The Red Cross will be supplying a lot of cleanup supplies for the, and, and information for anyone going back into their homes. And so that will be opening shortly to assist people with cleanups. So also, most of the evacuees, the families will need additional assistance. So National, I mean, North Coast Opportunities has opened up a fund, a donation site where you can help donate to the flood survivors and, and some of their needs. So we've been working really close with them too. And we appreciate all the assistance out there. But did I mention Senator McGuire is going to be there tomorrow night at seven at the shelter to speak to some of the evacuees that are there? So I think I, anything that I missed that we need to cover?
I was just going to add that we do have a, we will have an on-call EOC duty officer throughout the end of the month. We already have a schedule. We'll get that out to you sometime, hopefully tomorrow. But it'll have a department head that's always on call. You know, we have that scheduled out at least through the end of the month. So we can rotate through different people. Not one person has to be available every weekend. But we will have availability to respond to any needs if necessary.
Thank you to Margaret and Chief for doing such a good job running our emergency operations center. You guys look like pros and we're learning kind of every step of the way. But I think it was, and to the rest of the staff for working constantly. I think it was a week and a half that everyone was working just day and night constantly.
12 days.
Yeah, I'm so proud of my staff. Thank these guys.
Really amazing job.
No question. Just dug in there and got it done. And I really appreciate.
And it runs that well because of a team effort. I mean, that's, we couldn't do it with, with all of our staff involved and helping out. So thank you.
Yeah. And Mayor Matina was there by our side almost all the time. We appreciate that.
All right. All right. So, anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Tina?
Good evening, Lakeport City Council. I'm going to stretch this agenda just a little bit. Hopefully, I can. First, I'd like to commend you for all the work you've done with our flood victims. It was absolutely amazing, the effort helping our residents. But I would like to say that I know that we had many residents that were in fear of seeking assistance or shelter because they're undocumented residents. I honestly do not know how it feels to live like that, that fear that they have. I feel that the city needs to have this open discussion about what side of the fence they lie on our undocumented residents. But to be clear, I'm not asking for sanctuary. I know this has been a discussion that many cities have had in California, and I'm hoping actually to bring this to my board on the county level next week to have this discussion. I just think that the residents of the city of Lakeport need to know that we don't stand for acts of hate or discrimination and respect and protect all the residents regardless of their immigration status. I just think it's a discussion we need to have on the agenda and talk about. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, bring it back to the council. There's another discussion. We have a suggested motion.
Madam Mayor, I've moved to approve the continuation of the proclamation declaring a local state of emergency due to flooding and extreme weather.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have anti-price gouging laws during a state of emergency. David, it's back to you.
Thank you. So, it's my understanding that city staff had recently had some meetings with residents affected by the flooding. And one of the issues that came up was whether or not there are laws, or there could potentially be laws, that would prohibit either hotels or housing providers from increasing rents to an exorbitant amount during an emergency. Obviously, you've probably heard of incidents where unscrupulous businesspeople come in and try to take advantage of an emergency, where they're, you know, they're people who've got demands and they have no other outlet. So, in researching this issue, I determined that upon the proclamation of any emergency, state laws under Penal Code automatically kick in, which prohibit price gouging in an emergency. And it -- these laws, in particular, it's Penal Code 396. It's got a number of provisions, but what it does is it says, for any good, consumer good, for any housing that's being offered during a state of emergency, the price that is being demanded can't be 10% more than it was prior to the declaration of an emergency. Now, there are ways that a seller can claim that there is -- that they're justified in charging more than 10%, but it's a burden that's on the seller. And under these laws, which are in effect for 30 days unless extended by the agency that made the proclamation, you are subject to a misdemeanor or an up to $10,000 criminal penalty. And there's also potential civil penalties that are at play as well. And so, I thought it would be helpful for the council and for the community to understand that in fact, this law is in force in Lakeport at this time as a result of the emergency that we've been discussing. And it will remain in effect with respect to housing for 30 days from that date, so until the middle of -- well, until basically essentially the next council meeting. Unless the council decides that, given the situation, given the ongoing nature of the emergency, given the fact that there are still upwards of 100 people displaced, if you wanted to extend that, that would be something that was within your discretion to do. And the other thing that was raised was the possibility of increasing the penalty. And the Penal Code specifically says that it doesn't preempt a local agency from increasing penalties for the same or similar conduct. So, the example that we had and that the community brought up was what the county did after the Valley Fire. And they essentially said, instead of -- they still said it's still a misdemeanor to charge more than 10%, but instead of a $10,000 fine, it's a $20,000 fine. Now, again, these are criminal statutes in order to -- in order for someone to actually be convicted, they'd have to be prosecuted by the district attorney or by the attorney general. So, that's obviously a separate consideration. But the ability to make findings that in a particular situation, you know, an additional penalty is warranted is something that is also within this council's discretion to do. So, I wanted to make sure that the community understood what laws are in effect and also explain to the council what your options are in terms of extension of this law for an additional time period and in terms of increasing penalties. So, with that, have you taken any questions?
Good.
Question?
Well, it just seems to me as a comment that David had to look it up to make sure. And I'm sure that there's businesspeople that are opportunistic, but had they known or if they found out that there was a penalty and a cap of 10% that they would -- might want to consider doing the right thing rather than suffer the consequences and the bad social media and things like that. But I think it's good to know. And once again, I keep going back to the idea that information and letting people know and letting people know that they can, you know, self-report, you know, to other people that this is going on, and maybe they would want to capitulate and get in within the boundaries of it. But at the same time, I think there are circumstances, like let's say that there was a sandbag shortage and you had to bring them in from, you know, Georgia or, you know, Louisiana, and the cost of shipping drove it up to 25% more. And I'm sure there's reasons that some of that stuff could be different. But when it comes to housing and things like that, taking advantage of people that are in a seriously bad situation is just not very ethical. And a good thing that we have this particular thing, that letting people know that this is in there, and I know this is part of the job of Lake County News, so it's all good. Thank you, David, for finding out about that.
I would note also that there's a special provision that once there's a declaration of emergency, other than this 30-day timer, there's actually 180 days where it's illegal to charge more than 10% for contractors to sell or offer to sell any repair or reconstruction services used during emergency cleanup. So, the emergency cleanup portion extends actually for six months, which is useful for our public works to handle.
Very good.
But it stops during that emergency then, right? It doesn't carry over into a recovery period? So, the given --
For the cleanup, I think?
Yeah, it's six months.
Well, six months, but for the cleanup. And then it ceases. Rather than extending, which during Valley Fire, we heard reports of contractors' rates all of a sudden skyrocketing for rebuilding homes and becoming quite prohibitive and challenging for a lot of our residents to rebuild their houses. I think it's unfortunate that it ceases during the emergency period and doesn't actually take into consideration the recovery period.
Well, the way I read the statute is even if the emergency is over, this provision can be extended. And the findings that are required by the council to do so would be that it's necessary to protect the lives, property, and welfare of the citizens. So, even if the emergency is over, because obviously, under law, you're required to terminate the emergency at the earliest possible time, but that doesn't mean that you necessarily have to terminate the protections provided by the Penal Code, provided that you find that it's necessary to protect the property and lives and welfare.
Thank you. Should we decide it's necessary? Do we have to do something, or we just?
It would be helpful if you would give direction to staff that this is something that you would like to see, because we would need to do so at the next council meeting.
Absolutely. So, this is just a report, so we just need to direct staff, so if everyone wants to kind of turn it on?
Direct them in what way?
To bring that --
And pre-stake fines?
To bring it back that we would want it extended.
In terms of time?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone from the public? Questions or comments? George, do you have a question?
No.
No.
Well, it's kind of a question, but the thing is, is he says that is, you know, once the declaration of emergency is done, this can be done. But what about the time between the city council declaring an emergency and the people needing to get out of their houses and get into something prior to that? I mean, is the law flexible of going backwards, say, 30 days, or?
No, it's triggered by the declaration of the emergency, which would be -- yeah, that's right.
But the declaration could take place with the EOC directive, or what Margaret could declare, because we ratify.
We ratify, yeah.
Right? So, it would happen pretty quickly.
It went back all the way to --
14.
We ratified -- we declared on the 14th, and it was able to go back 10 days. So, it's actually, I think, from February 4th would be covered under the emergency declaration.
Okay.
Any other comments? Do you have any direction?
I understand my direction to be to bring back something that would extend the time period for these provisions to be in effect. All right?
Yes. Good.
Yeah.
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
Council Communications. Margaret, do you want to start?
I just wanted to advise council that we probably were going to have a special council meeting on March 20th, and there'll probably be a cancellation of the March 21st meeting. I will be advising the public of that as we get closer.
Okay.
That's the third Monday.
It's the -- yeah, the Monday through the Tuesday. So, it'll be March 20th and then cancellation on the Saturday.
It's not that.
Just a little bit.
David?
So, that's it.
Nick?
Yeah, I just wanted to report quickly that during the emergency, the city was -- on March 1st, we were able to close the transaction to refinance the CMLSD Special Assessment debt at an interest rate of 2.8%, saving property owners within the reassessment district over $1 million.
Great.
2.8%? Good to know.
Anything else? How's all your paperwork going?
My desk in my office is full of it.
Full of paperwork.
Yeah.
Doug, anything else?
The only other thing I'd like to add to my previous comments is that the utility department is Brian, Paul, FEMA head. All of our utilities, water and sewer are doing very well at this time. We have -- Paul's been really aggressive on trying to isolate INI. We have another suspect that we're going to be doing some research on, as well as we're bringing back in camera crews to do some more cammering in areas that we feel that we're getting substantial INI and try to isolate those areas. And so, there's a lot of ongoing work on the utility side as well. And that's it.
And INI, again, is?
That's water from the outside getting into our sewer system. And it could be from roots or...
I just thought everyone else would want to know what it stands for. What is it, intrusion and?
Infiltration.
Ooh, look at you guys.
Formed consumer.
Never mind. I'll do. Chief?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw out, we have a serious attempt homicide case, double attempt homicide case Saturday morning. And that's still under investigation, but the reason I bring it up is based on the preliminary information I have, I do believe that the diligent work of one of my sergeants, Joe Easton, led to saving a life. So, I'm proud of their actions with that, and I'll be bringing back further information once I get all the detail on that. Thank you.
Kelly?
Trying to attend to things outside of the flood as well. I know there were a couple things that came up in public comments as well that staff is trying to diligently get on, so I hope the community can lead through our patients. And they are on our list, and they're not forgotten, but we're pretty consumed right now with some of the flood recovery stuff, so.
Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Spur?
No report.
Councilmember Prado?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Barnes?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Turner?
I wanted to say thank you to the management staff and to the Lakeport staff. Y'all totally rock. Every time I was in that EOC for a meeting, it was so impressive to see the whole room working together, coming up with solutions. It was just a -- it was a good team effort. It was an effective, efficient team at the hour when we really, really, really needed it. So, just well done. Well done.
Thank you.
Additionally, one thing that we didn't mention during the flood discussion is the service centers that are going to be available for the flooded flood recovery. Saturday, from 9:00 to 5:00, we'll be at the Clear Lake Oaks Methodist Church. I just saw an email that confirmed the availability for that. And then, Sunday from 9:00 to 5:00 at the Seventh-day Adventist Church. So, this will be an opportunity for a number of county agencies and Red Cross and other agencies to meet with residents to help them with recovery. So, there will be bags for cleanup, as well as a number of information brochures from Public Health to help advise people on the safest way to get back into their homes.
Well, yeah, we keep thanking staff over and over. Definitely did rock it, and it's been -- time to be very proud to be from Lakeport. I also wanted to thank the citizens. There's a ton of citizens that either took in their neighbor, or they're assisting their neighbor, or they're voting each other in. And there's some areas that maybe could have been evacuated, but we were able to let them be because they followed the road barricades, they helped each other, and so what a great community. So, thank you to all our citizens for watching out for each other. Meeting adjourned.